I don't really pay attention. Do I, since we don't have a quorum yet, do I still read the notice? Or we'll read the notice when we're going to have the actual meeting because we'll have the guest speakers present. All right, it's 10 o'clock. Can we get everyone in the room? AV team, we're good. All right, it's 10 o'clock. Can we get everyone in the room? That's how I sound? Put me out of my misery. I'm kidding. It's a joke, folks. Welcome. Good morning. I'm going to call it to order, but we're going to skip two and three until we get a quorum in here. We just want to get a full head count because I think there's a line in the toilet. You can't see me? I'm not as tall as out there. I don't wear heels, so. Yeah, we have Mayor Jun. Mingila. Okay, let's try to find out and let's see if we can get some visuals. There he is. All right. Is anybody else left in the gallery over there? Just two? All right, go ahead and, well. Are we broadcasting? Okay, camera on. I'm not usually here at this time, so does it say like this meeting is being recorded? There it is. Really? Can we get a Mayor Jun and, okay, we'll go back to the Zoom section there. Mayor Jun, Mayor Homatac, can you just turn on your camera just to see if we can see if you're there? We saw Mingila already. Just really quick so we can just verify that you're the person there. Because you make the quorum, so. Homatac and Baragana, just turn on your camera if you can. Mayor Jun, Mayor Homatac, if you can turn on your camera so we can just confirm that you're online. There we go. We see you. Okay, you can turn it off now, unless you want to stay on, that's fine. Next, there she is. All right, good. And with two more. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. In accordance with the open government law, first notice was advertised in the Guam Daily Post on July 1st, 2025, and the second notice on July 7th, 2025, and posted on the government of Guam Public Notice Portal. Additionally, this meeting is being recorded and live streamed by the Mayor's Council of Guam's YouTube channel. Roll call.
Mayor Jesse Alett. Mayor Dell Alvarez.
Mike Openola here for Mayor Dell Alvarez.
Mayor Richard Arroyo. Vice Mayor Jesse Bautista. Mayor Peter Beneventi. Mayor Jun Bloss.
President.
Vice Mayor Pedro Bloss. Mayor Franklin Chumpaco. Mayor Anthony Charloff. Vice Mayor Christopher Farron. Mayor Michael Gomatauto. Mayor Robert Hoffman. Vice Mayor Ann Leon Guerrero. Mayor Francis Lozama. Mayor Rudy Paco. Mayor Johnny Canata. Mayor Louise Rivera, present. Mayor Frankie Solis. Mayor Wayne Santes. Mayor Kevin Siswiko. Mayor Vicente Tytegui. Mayor Brian Terlahi. Vice Mayor Edward Tosco. Vice Mayor Albert Toviz. Mayor Alan Agokta.
Present.
Okay, and also joining us, we have Mayor Richard Arroyo. Mr. President, we have 18 members present. We have a quorum.
Thank you for trying to find that we have a quorum. We'll go ahead and rise for the National Anthem and the Guam Hymn. Thank you and good morning. Today with us, we have a few of our guest speakers and we'd like to call them up to the podium here. First, from the State Historic Preservation Office, the Guam Historic Resources Division, we have Mr. Patrick Luhon. Yes, right here. And is this his birthday? It's your birthday today? Happy birthday. Colleagues, please check your phones and play some of the silent mode. Check your phones. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Sheesh, this is a hard agenda to get on. Been trying, trying to get on all year, but glad to see everybody here. All right, so there's three things. I know my time is limited. I just want to go over three things with you as a, as a captured audience is we have a list of national registered sites that are listed from each village. So especially the new mayors, you may not be too familiar of what's registered. So I have that and if you want to hand it out to each village. It's not everything that is historically significant in your village, and that's what I'm here to talk about and be partners about. But it's, it's a, it's a program that it's been going on for a long time and it's a, it's a federally registered program. Okay, and we'll go to the slides on that. But the, the second thing really is we're also working towards a big emphasis on, on architecture, right? Historic architecture. Within the national framework, 50 years is considered eligible for the, for the national registry. So what we've been doing is looking at different infrastructures in your villages. We've done a survey in the south. We've done a survey in the central and Tumuning, and we're in the process of finishing up the island on the east side and Jigo. So, you know, homes, businesses, commercial buildings that, you know, 1975 is considered eligible, right? So something to think about as you look, go around your village, you know, and we have the survey available in our office that you're, please, you know, feel free to come in anytime or have somebody in your office. We have, we are a resource for you that we can work together. I'm sure we're missing a lot of data and information from a historical point of view, archaeological point of view, that can be enhanced, you know, to, to add value to your village. Okay, so we can quickly go to the slides. We can go to the next slide. Again, you know, here, just to kind of introduce myself to the mayors and vice mayors that I don't know personally. Most of you I do, thankfully. And so again, whenever your crew goes out to your village or whatnot and you have a question or you have a project, right? Because usually we have to make, we have to clear it. A lot of you, you know, probably don't really want to go through the permitting process, but we're here to help, right? Just give us a call. Just make sure that whatever you're doing, you know, you're not going to be, the last thing we want to do is stumble upon a, you know, set of burials, right? That our ancestors buried, you know, hundreds of years ago. And that's where we, we use that, you know, in our, our expertise with our archaeologists to come in and assist with that. So we don't want to be an enemy of you. We actually want to be a true partner, you know, and, you know, keeping that historic value in your, in your respective villages. So let's go to the slides and you can see, we can just swing through. Go ahead. Who has the slide? Who's the controller? All right, so, you know, you're looking at Hagania, right? You have most of it and it covers different, different periods of history from World War II, pre-World War II, the Spanish era. So you see a lot of Hagania has many, many periods that are, have been established and recorded. Okay, next slide. Here's Hagat. Again, a lot of World War II era, right? Umen Dam, the Amtrak that's underwater. So even, even underwater archaeology falls under our office. Okay, so those who are within the coastlines, if there's anything that's outside of your, your coast, we also look into, into the historic integrity of mostly, you know, war, war artifacts underwater. Next slide. This is Asamayna, okay? The invasion. Battle Ridge. Again, we have all these documents in our office that you can come by and get a copy of the file, right? And just review the history. We're also doing inventories of it. So sometimes we'll be calling upon you to assist us to go to these sites because some of them we haven't, we haven't visited in, you know, maybe, you know, a decade or so. So we are doing inventories, taking pictures if it still exists, right? Sometimes there, there's something that was, for instance, one of the historic homes in Hagania, you know, they demolished it. And so we have to document that and then delist it, take it off of the list. Next slide. Baragana, you know, they only have two. Mayor Jesse took me out to another one. I don't even know that, that one that we went to. Yeah, if it's on it, so we can, if it's not, then we can work on that, right? Next slide. Chalapago Odut, right? I know there's more than that, Wayne. So we can work together and, you know, you've got your Pago pillboxes, but there's, there's really more to that, that we can work on that. Next slide. Dedudu, right? Also, that's on the federal jurisdiction. We include that on your, in your jurisdiction too, right? So those mostly are, are on the NCS side or, you know, Navy property. But something for you to be aware of, we worked with Mayor Dell also for Fena that falls under the San Trita site. Next slide. Inilahan, a lot of it is prehistory. You know, of course, Godau's Cave being the most, most famous down there and, you know, working with the mayor to try and do some sort of protection of that, you know, to avoid any type of potential vandalism. That's the least, that's the last thing we want to do is to have our historic sites be vandalized, right? And it's happened. It's happened in Hawaii. It's happened in other, other places and it destroys, you know, the history of it. Next slide. Mingila, again, Mayor Allen. I'm sure there's more than two than, than what you've got on that list. Slide. Melasu, you got a good amount, but again, there's more. And we're working on the, with your, your crew right now for, as we speak. Okay, next slide. PT, okay. Atentano is probably the most famous one and then your, your defense guns up in the, on the mountain. Again, look, SMS Comorong, that's underwater, right? So that falls under, is he here? No. Okay, next slide. San Trita, Sumai, again, that's on federal property, but that falls under Mayor Alvarez's. Slide. Sinahanya. We only got one. So officially, and I know you have way more than that, right? So even that tunnel. It might be on the Guam register, but not on the national. So we can work on it. Yep. And then the, under the ground, the tunnel underneath, we can do that too. Okay, next slide. Talafofu, okay, a lot of that too. Slide. And Tumuning. A lot of the fortifications down in Ipau, Tumun. By the way, we're also trying to launch the Naftan Manyanata project. That's for the overall reburials of all the hornbostul collection. Over 3,000 remains that finding the legislature appropriated money to build that and that's going to be up at Ipau Point. So that's an exciting project that's going to be coming up shortly. Next slide. Tumpum. Slide. Homatac. A big project there on the Sanchez School that's ongoing. Slide. Jigo. Okay, next slide. Jonya, I think that's the last one, right? Is there another one? That's it? Okay. So that just, you can see what, what's on the national register. Again, there's much more significance in your, in your respective villages, right? More than what's on this list. And, you know, we, we are here to, to document that. You know, there's misconceptions of, you know, we're not allowed to do or, 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 you know, do anything with that property once it's on that. That's not true. That's furthest from the truth. But it does add a significant historical value to that property and to your village. And so that's what we're here for, to work together. If you come across, I know your previous, your predecessor in, in the Gania Heights identified some potential new sites from the Japanese. So we also work with the Japanese consulate for them because they're still up till now looking for the Japanese dead, right? From World War II. Guam is the smallest accounted-for area in the Pacific from, from Japanese retrieval. All the other islands around here are about 60 to 70% accounted for for Japanese soldiers. Us, we're still less than 10%. They're still searching for them. Okay, and a lot of that is going into your villages, right? And into the jungles if they have any, if they have any tips. They're actually on island right now. We're supposed to meet this week on that. So a lot of things are still happening from different eras. We're looking at our most recent period of, of history, again, the last 50 years. Most of us are eligible for the national register at 50 years, right? So, you know, looking at the infrastructure, right? Looking at the old homes, we've identified a lot of historic homes down in Inilahan. They've done a lot of rehabilitation, restoration projects are ready for that. We can be, those could be eligible for other villages. Tumuning, we've identified some, right? And again, please come to our office and you can look at, at the survey and what's, what's eligible and what can come up with it. Okay, so if you guys have any questions, you know, most of you have my number, okay? Just don't be like the mayor of Inilahan that he, he texts me always at the wrong time. So, but you have my number, easy to find. Let's work together and, you know, we can document all of these historic places in your respective villages.
Thank you, Mr. Luhon. I do have a question for you. A few weeks ago, I met with Assistant, or Assistant Secretary Demapan from Department of Interior, and I did ask, what's the role between you have what you do, the historic preservation and the National Park Service on it? Because I wanted to see, a lot of our memorials are not declared national parks, but you have areas where battles took place, where concentration, all over the United States. And in the National Park Service for, I guess, our area, they do the Arizona Memorial, Diamond Head, a few others, but we really kind of feel that Mananga and all this should be declared that because then there's a level of funding and protection that happens there in terms of preservation. Because it meets that national park kind of theory. So what's the relation there and how can we get those memorial sites listed as a national park versus just being, because the, I would say Fena and all the Sumai, those are all falling by the wayside. And I mean, it's just through time, it's just going to deteriorate. Suddenly it's just going to be flat area. So go ahead.
Yeah, good question. So when you nominate a site into the national register, there's different type of, different sets of criteria, right? And, and it basically boils down to the historic significance, right? A lot of this, again, is a matter of doing the paperwork and to do the nomination. Manengan, they went through the whole, I think it's, it's an entire landmark, national landmark, landmark. It took years to get that approved, right? So, so memorials, you know, again, it takes, it's much harder to justify a memorial than it is obviously a battlefield, but it's still possible and it's been done, obviously. Manengan is again, you know, part of that. So, you know, there's a lot of, and that's where we come in to assist you, right? Because we're, we will, we will walk the process through before eventually getting it approved from the national level. It takes, it takes time. We have to really justify what criteria it'll fall under. So again, like I said, you know, it's not a true reflection of your respective villages as to what you have there, just because you only have one or you have two on the list. I highly doubt that. There's way more, you know, Guam is just rich in history on every, every village that we have. And so we just need to work together. You guys are the, you know, you're the boots on the ground and, and, you know, just allow us that opportunity to work with you when it comes to, you know, whether it's your, your guys out there cutting the grass and they come along and find a loose song, give us a call, you know, and we'll assist on, on, on what's the next step in the process. So even those little tiny finds, we, we can help you on that and, and process it, you know, accordingly. I hope that answered it.
Yes, thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Luhon?
Yes, please. The Mayor Homatac?
Yeah, there was a mayor.
Sorry, Mayor Inilahan is going to speak first and then your next mayor, John.
Yeah, the question was, is there any financial support for being on the register? There, there is, but not as much as people think, right? It's, it's more for recognition and a status, but there are grants out there. Guam Preservation Trust has grants. There's national grants. You know, there's, there's different grants and we can help with that too. Our office doesn't necessarily, doesn't have money to, to preserve, right? We're, we're more of a consultation, consulting entity, but we can lead you to those opportunities. And quite frankly, it's not much, but it's, it's something to, you know, to, to look at.
Thank you. The Mayor Homatac?
Yes, sir. At the Fort Sodan, I have three canyons that are, need to be restored. When can we restore that? Because right now it's unsafe for the people and there's always a lot of people on, at the fort weekends and sometime weekdays, but they're sitting down in the canyons and it's all damaged.
I know, GPT, yeah. GPT was the one that, that made the investment on that. I can talk to Joe. I mean, he's from, he's from your village. I actually have a meeting with them tomorrow. I'll bring that up with them tomorrow to see if, if there's any movement on, on that.
Any other questions? Jonya and then.
Not really a question, but I just want to recognize that Manengan, we just received the national historic landmark from Manengan, the Manengan Concentration Camp. And I know I've been working with, with Uncle Joe Canata and then also with the Manenga Memorial Foundation. So we just received the plaque. We were trying to unveil it for the Manenga Memorial Ceremony on July 6th, but I guess it didn't come in on time. So, yeah, we'll, we'll be hearing much more about it later, but we are on the national historic landmark.
And that's very hard to get, so congratulations on that.
All right, Agania Heights.
Thank you. Thank you, Shippel, Mr. Shippel, my childhood friend for that great presentation. I just have three questions. I'm not sure if I missed the first, you know, I didn't see Fort Apugan. Is Fort Apugan on that?
It is.
Okay, and that falls under Agania Heights?
Yes.
But it, yeah, okay. And then the Fonte River, I noticed that it, I was talking to the good mayor, Uncle Frankie Solis, about it being, there's a very fine line on the land management map, which is the official map of the, of the border, right? So it's always a toss-up between, excuse me, Agania Heights, Asamayna, Nimitz Hill, what we were mentioning. But that river really is on the, the main base where the water falls. Just a quick, you know, little history that that water fed the individuals in Hagania pre-war. So it's very, it has a very significant part to Agania Heights as well. So I noticed that's part of the asset inventory. Could you just expound on that? And the last question is, I will sidebar with you on the, regarding the conversation you had with the good previous mayor, Mayor McDonald. Thank you.
Yeah, so that Fonte is actually just the dam itself that's on it, not the river, right? So, and sometimes we, we look at the, the landmarkings, you know, if these surveys or whatever were done in the 70s and then for some reason it changed of land management, land management, that's something that we have to fix, right? So again, working with you guys, what's, what's the property line? What village, right? It falls in? And then, you know, you have the, like the thematic parts of the ridge of Asen, right? And when does it, when does it transfer over into the next village or, or it, in Adalup? Because part of it is, is in Adalup, which is Agania, right? Hagania. So we get, we get to those things. So we get, we get to those things and those are things that we have to always look up and, and update if we can. But we work closely with land management as well to make sure that we get the most accurate information. Even dealing with GIS, a lot of our plots are off. And so we're going back to these sites to make it as accurate as possible to really pinpoint where these locations are at.
Okay, thank you. And just being, because the former deputy director of land management, that was part of the project, too, that I was looking at because we were looking for sites for memorials as well. But Fonti, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that is on the, on the dam itself at least. It falls under Aganya, it's under the bound, under the, it's not just more meets and bounds and the points. But those Maholans, of course, are way gone. I mean, but the map has not been amended since then unless I'm into it otherwise.
We'll look into that. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Lohan. We appreciate your presentation. Again, everyone, if you need more information, just ask Bing and Bing will send you the, we're already at our time limit. You want to just ask on the site? Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's just the contact number. Just WhatsApp his cell phone to everybody. All right, thank you. Up next, we have the president of the Guam Kayak and Canoe Federation, Melanie Escobar.
Hafaday, thank you so much. So nervous being up here. Hafaday, honorable mayors and vice mayors, my name is Melanie Escobar and I am the president of the Guam Kayak and Canoe Federation. And I'm here to propose an exciting and culturally grounded youth initiative. The purpose is to introduce a middle school youth outrigger paddling program that promotes Tramor culture, health, teamwork, and community pride. Currently, we do have clubs, but it's not as much as we used to have prior to COVID and all our last typhoons. So we are trying to bring that back. We have four members, four clubs under our federation, and each of those clubs, we have, only two clubs have about five teams. My club, we, I coach the youngest, which is, my youngest paddler is five years old, up to, for the Menhobin, up to fourteen years old, but I am the only team with that age group. And starting last year with that age group, in a year's time, we have a five-year-old paddling and competing against kids within the Menhobin age. So the vision is why outrigger canoeing? It's a deep-rooted part of Tramor and Pacific Island heritage. It builds physical fitness, teamwork, and discipline, and it keeps youth engaged in positive and health activities. I've been an athlete since high school. I played basketball, volleyball, soccer, softball, and I've never did paddling until I became an adult and I loved it, and now my kids are doing it. And I will tell you right now, many of my paddlers, they are scared of the ball, they do not like to run, and once they've started paddling, they've become an athlete, which they never thought they would. Our target group is, for this program would be middle school students ages eleven to fourteen. It's a key developmental stage. We focus on inclusivity, girls, boys from all the villages. Right now, our canoes are down in Matopping, and it used to be a boat basin, but with lighting and security, many of our boats were getting damaged. So many of our teams brought it down to Matopping still. We want it, or I, as a federation, would like it down south. We have high school paddling and the disadvantage is our southern high students, which makes me very sad seeing that, because they do not have access to the canoes or the program down south. And that's what we are trying to do, is to get the youth started in all the villages. Sorry. And one thing about our sport is we have a males crew, females crew, and a mixed team crew. The program's structure would be to start off, once we get our equipment, the canoe based in the village with the paddles, would be a weekend just to get the interest. And trust me, it's going to build up where, once school starts, it could be after-school practices and activities. Once they get started, you'll have combination of friendly inter-village regattas every quarter. And us paddlers, we are so jealous of the southern waters because no matter of the tide, you guys have beautiful calm waters to race in. So we would love more boats down in that area. A cultural component, it is an integration of Tramor history, chants, canoe terminology. So we are not only teaching paddling, the physical skills of it, but we also teach the Tramor history. And every, before every races, we do have their blessings of the canoes in Tramor. And we get the high schoolers, the students involved in that blessing. We get involvement of the elders, the master navigators, and also the master canoe builders. Ulitau, they helped me promote our sport at Micronesia Mall. They asked us for my, for Tramor Month, they asked us to do a table and display. I could not bring in a galei, but they brought in a Sakmen and everybody was impressed and they learned so much about our navigation and about our canoes. So we do take partnership with our other cultural brothers and sisters and elders in the tradition. The community partnerships, collaboration with the village sports programs, local schools, again, we do have high school, but we need to start these kids earlier in the middle school, introduce it. This is not a sport where you can just take a ball, dribble it at home. This is not a sport where you can have the environment of a gym or the basketball hoop or a ball playing against the wall. This is a sport where teamwork, discipline, and a lot of practices go into it. It takes months in order for you to get the skill. And if we introduce and start them early, we will produce good paddling athletes and represent us very well in the Pacific Games and even in the Olympics. We're seeking, GNOC does support us and GDOE with our high school. However, I am asking village mayors if they would like to take this initiative or be partners in taking initiative in our, starting our youth, a paddling club in your village, a paddling team, and get them going. Again, it is such a fun sport and we build not only athletes, but we teach them about our culture and we also develop leaders from this. Okay? So the support, what we would need is, of course, outrigger canoe. We recommend a six-person canoe and it's really the galei. The galei is our outrigger canoe. It's, it's a smaller hole and it's easier for our Menhobins to reach. And then we also have for our, out of the reef, we use the Hawaiian rockets, which is a bigger hole and it's safer. And then we have the Polynesian Va'ua. So that's a bigger hole and that runs much more smoothly with our outside reef water conditions. However, we do not bring our youth out there. So, but just to give you an idea that it's for a youth program, it is good to start with the galeis. Paddles, twelve paddles would be great to start with. Life vests is always needed. And of course, places to put your canoes, which is easy access to water. I've been going around in the villages, going to, attending parties and attending barbecues and everything. And especially down south, I'm already eyeing some mayors that I would like to talk to because you have nice beach areas, accessible, good to have races. And I know we've had races before there and I would love to bring it back, especially in time for fiestas. Or, you know, just to promote any activities, our paddlers love to race in all areas of the island. And, but yeah, so just requesting, you know, if you are interested, I will be emailing you the information and we can talk more about more details. I am getting quotes for a six-man canoe or working with our clubs who have existing canoes and see what program we can start off with. But again, we are, we have access to all this water. We are islanders. It's built in us to paddle. However, we are the most expensive sport because just one canoe, it does take quite a lot. And also to have paddles. It's not like just a basketball or soccer ball. So we do ask for your support for this cultural sport and especially to start our youth program. Another thing is Guam hosts the Micro Cup. We just got back from the Pacific Mini Games in Palau, which our team was represented with our national team. Next year, Guam is hosting the Micro Cup and it's usually rotated with Saipan and Palau. However, we would like to prepare our kids now because we are not just inviting Palau and Saipan, but we are also Marshall Islands, Singapore, Japan, they're all doing outrigger and they would love to come to Guam. So our sport also brings in not teams of five, but teams of fifteen to twenty paddlers at least, and that would also help us boost our economy. So we would like to prepare for that event as we are looking forward to hosting quite a number of islands and countries next year. So, any questions?
Any questions? The mayor of Tumuning is recognized.
When are you looking at for next year?
So the Micro Cup, we're, we usually host in the late, like, third weekend of October.
Okay.
Yeah. But again, the practice and developing of our paddlers, it takes, especially brand new, it takes at least a year to get them. And I would love for all the kids, the youth in every village to have that opportunity to paddle.
Any other questions?
The contact, I'll be emailing and give you the information on, yes, on our contact emails and contact numbers.
Is the Kokos Lagoon one of the southern areas you're looking at?
Yes, yes. And actually, that's what I can, yes, Maleso Pier, Yumatic Bay, Inarahan, Talafofo Bay, especially sometimes uncertain times of the year. If it does get too rough, then we don't. But we do have paddlers from all over the island, especially down south, and they would love to just drive ten minutes instead of thirty minutes going down to Tramor.
Yeah, they got a lot of kids approaching me as well. So I would like to
Yes.
get with you and maybe do something at the pier. We even have a spot for you to put the canoes and stuff, so.
Definitely, yeah. That's one of the major spots we were looking at.
Any other questions? If there's none, thank you so much, Melanie. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Up next, from the USGS Brown Tree Snake Project, we have Ms. Christiana Kinata.
Hafaday, good morning, everyone. Just gonna start my timer so I don't go over. Can we, yeah, thank you. I'm Christiana Kinata. I am with the US Geological Survey in the, with the Brown Tree Snake Project. And I'm here to tell you about our partnership with Guam Power Authority in looking at the effects of snake-caused outages on our islands and how we can reduce that. So just a little background about the USGS Brown Tree Snake Project. We've actually been on island for several, a couple of decades and overall, like, we are providing scientific understanding for what the brown tree snake has caused to the island and also developing different tools to manage and control it and make sure it doesn't go spread throughout, or make sure it doesn't spread throughout the region. And as I mentioned, so since we have been studying the brown tree snake for quite some time now, we are partnering with GPA that still has a massive problem of brown tree snake-caused outages, and that's definitely not for lack of trying. Next slide. So I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with the brown tree snake. Just a reminder that thankfully, it's only, it's the only native, non-invasive snake species on island, but it's really, you know, caused the loss of our native forest birds and has continued to cause power outages. So they're active at night, they're really cryptic and hard to find, and they're really great climbers, making them very problematic on overhead lines and at substations. Next slide. So if you can see here, this is just more of an example of how they cause power outages. And they climb up on those overhead lines and any hardware that's energized, they'll touch one wire that's energized and then connect to another because their bodies are so long that they will cause that fault. And so that will cause power failure and will then send out dispatch to then figure out what's the problem. And so these pictures are generated from GPA dispatch, just showing that this is where the snakes are found. They're found on the crossarms, in between the wires and sometimes on the ground. Next slide. So just to give you an idea, like, what is the impacts to the residents? So they cost Guam Power Authority, I'm sure, more than three million dollars. And of course, that impacts us customers here on island. Snake outages, they can last a few minutes or it can also last several days. And it just depends on the location of the outage and how, what type of hardware was impacted and the timeline it takes to repair it and things like that. And customers, I'm sure you know, brownouts are real, right? Snake-caused outages happen, but you can be affected multiple times in a year. And that snake-caused outages, they occur late at night, right? The snake moves at night, it hunts for food at night. So that's usually when the outages occur. So late at night and early in the morning, and that's usually when residents are at home. Next slide. So I'm here to tell you about our project that's currently ongoing right now, or the piece of our project that's ongoing, which is nighttime snake visual surveys. And so that's basically just us going out. Now we're in the roads and we're in the various communities near substations and we're looking for snakes. And so that just, so the goal of that is to really understand the snake populations that's around those substations, where they're coming from, right? Is it coming from urban areas or more jungle areas and to the substation? And that'll help inform what's our next move to help GPA mitigate snake-caused outages. Next. So this is, so here's a photo of a searcher who's along the road and looking for snakes. We use a really high-powered headlamp and we're scanning through the vegetation nearby, the trees. But our focus for this project is also the power lines. And if we're along fences, that's where we're looking. However, we're only capturing snakes that are on tree lines or on the trees, fence lines, and on the ground. If we see a snake on a power pole, we're going to call GPA dispatch immediately to let them know that there is a snake up there. Yeah, so, and then going back to the photo, you can see there's a very small marking of some flagging tape. So you might see some flagging tape along the roads and that's just to help us, orient us and know where to search. When our biologists are out there searching for snakes, there's usually, they're usually in a pair, they're wearing high-vis vests and an orange shirt. And when we do conduct our night vis, our night surveys, we're only working during the work week and not on weekends. Next. So what we, what do we do when we capture a snake? So like I mentioned, we see a snake, we capture it, it's in the tree, we got it. And then we measure it, we record the data, we look at, we measure the size, the sex information, and then we also mark and implant a tag. And then we're, we're only releasing the same snake. And the purpose of that is to track those snake movements. And that's how we're trying to figure out where the snakes are coming from, how far out away from the substations. And, and also too, if they're susceptible to the current control traps that are around the substations that USDA has set up. So, yeah, we're tracking snakes weekly for one year around the eight different substations. I think we provided some maps for you all. Next slide. So as I mentioned, there's the list of substations that we've worked with GPA to identify the most, the substations that tend to have the most snake-caused outages. So Jigo, Harmon, Tumuning, Aganya, but it's like in, in Mongmuntotu, Mitie area, Piri, Palanta, Talafofo, and Tangjovista. So just to like orient you on that map there, those lines you see along the roadside, that is our transects or where we're searching for snakes. So if you look at the maps that were passed out, you can see, I think it's a yellow line. And those yellow lines indicate where we're doing our And those yellow lines indicate where we're doing our snake searches. So, I guess just to show you, like, the Agania substation, it's along Roy T. Damian Street. That's a really populated area. And so, really, the purpose for this, for us presenting to you all is just to inform you that we're doing this work in the village. But we're only staying within the right-of ways. So, we're not going, trying to go into people's yards or other private property. We're really just staying along the roadways or GPA property that we've coordinated permission. Next. So, here's some just summary points. And then, I just wanted to mention this number, the 362-858511 is a number that anyone can call. And we update that weekly to let you know what days we're searching and where. So, we'll say, "We're searching PD substation on Thursday night." But the timing can range from sundown till midnight. We can't give that exact time that we're searching because it varies, especially with weather and things. But we can at least tell you where we are on a given night. There is my email address. And then, also, my counterpart, John Beneventi Jr., in the back there, his email address. And we have Ms. Joyce Sayama from GPA Communications as well. But just, and then, lastly, the, this project is funded by Office of Insular Affairs. Yes. So, I guess with that, if you all have any questions, happy to take them.
Raise your hand if you have a question. Momontotumaiti followed by Agania Heights.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. How are the snakes able to climb up the power pole?
How, say that one more time.
How are the snakes able to climb up the power pole?
So, they are actually, they can actually, depending on their length, they can wrap their bodies around and shimmy up the power pole. But also, they could come on by those guy wires and they can climb up the guy wires or even any vegetation that could be touching the line.
Thank you. I think it's all about preventive maintenance. If we start trimming down the trees away from the power lines, I think we can win the battle.
I think so. And hopefully, like, as we're doing this, we're doing this weekly, right? We're going out and we're doing searches four nights a week for a year. And so, maybe those are like observations we can help make to kind of provide this information to GPA to help them, maybe they will make their management decisions.
I think it's mostly from the vegetation that the snakes are able to climb up the wire.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, it's all about PM. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. That's really good slideshow. It's a lot of information, a lot of stuff I didn't know. You know, we have a mayor's chat with GPA. Mr. Vice President Hoffman? I haven't never seen yet, but have you guys ever posted a snake to GPA? That's interesting, right, on that, because you'd be port parologists?
We get it, but not in the Sinahania side where it's snake-caused outage. It's usually the Chalapago side or your side by the, where all these mango trees are headed near your area, in your SDA. But it doesn't, it doesn't affect us there. But we know, I get, I know it gets out because I see the reports. And during the storms especially, it was always just, it's all that mango trees on that one street.
Oh, no, sorry, no, my, actually, the question was really, sorry, was the chat, mayor? You know, I've never seen any, hey, this is mayor so-and-so. We have a snake crawling up. And then, GPA will say, because their GPA is incredible. Just that you guys know the crews that do the dispatch for these emergency outages, they're really good. But I have never seen yet a snake complaint yet. So, I'm just curious. That's something. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Buenos en hafadeh. Joyce Sayama, again, from Guam Power Authority Communications. Thank you, mayor, for that question. We do, prior to you coming on board, we've had a lot of interactions with the mayor about snake-related outages. And we try, there's several of us in there, as high as the assistant GMs that are on that chat group. So, thank you for always. And we do our best throughout the entire night to try and get you the information when we're not asleep. No matter what day of the week, even if we're traveling, we're responding. But just to let you know, we have posted in our monthly newsletters that you get with your bill statements, our activities with snake-related outages. And thank you, we'll do more of that. But yes, there is no limits as far as, you know, letting us know. If you see the, you know, you see these critters or you feel that there might be a problem, let us know. We will respond. And also, to just, for Mayor Paco's, just to answer his questions, are our line crews out there? It's not just during storms or when storms are, you know, impending. Our line crews are out there 24 hours, seven days a week. We're, you know, we're available. And they do a lot of trimming throughout the year. It's not just during storms. It's part of their KPIs or key performance indicators. However, Guam is green and we have rain throughout the year. But we do, and please, we're, we welcome all of you to let us know, hey, we need a line crew out here. We need this trimmed. Let us know. Our dispatch is 24 hours. I think all of you have the speed dial numbers. You're welcome to call me. Tracy, Agmo, we're all there for you all. You know, it's all about, you know, our customers and all about our community. So, yes, we will put the information out a little bit more if you need that. But we do, we've given on our February of this year, we've actually given out the information on what we do. Because it's not just USGS. We also collaborate with USDA, the Animal Inspection. And these are the ones that the linemen actually report to USDA. So, we're really happy to have USGS doing nighttime surveys. And it's really important. And we did send out a release, and they will be doing this project for about a year. And it's something that we're, you know, looking forward to. Anything to mitigate, you know, any of the outages is really what we, you know, our goal is. The less, you know, the less outages, the better for us, right? I mean, for the entire island. And like he said, it's an impact as far as cost. So, thank you, mayor.
So, sorry, you're Joyce?
Yes, I am.
Nice to meet you. I'm a freshman, mayor, sorry. You're incredible. Thank you so much.
It's a team effort, everyone.
I thought it was an AI Joyce, yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions on the brown tree snake? Mayor Inarahan?
Yeah, so my comment here is I'm quite intrigued that you guys are doing a catch and release with regards to snakes. It's kinda, really kinda mind-blowing for me because we are definitely trying our due diligence in trying to eradicate these snakes. And you guys are actually catching them and tagging them and releasing them. I'm just saying, at what point in this program is there gonna be an eradication effort? Because releasing them back, they're now potentially gonna cause a future outage, right? So, and I'm not quite sure I understand the, I realize that all these studies are being done around substations. I'm not quite sure why would, I mean, I guess they do serve the GPA purpose. But having them released to, so if we release it in Tengjou, we're thinking it might go to Talafofu and that's kind of the information we're trying to gather? Okay, I'm just wondering because it kind of really doesn't, it sounds like we're spending a lot of money. And at the end goal, we've just tagged and released. And so, the problem is gonna still exist after all the effort, right? So, is there any, after a year, in this case, with your project, is there gonna be a catch and kill or?
Yeah, no, that's a very valid question. I think, so I guess I'll start off with, we are focusing near the substations, right? Because the substations, if a substation goes down because of a snake, it impacts more residents. Whereas if a power line is, you know, a snake caused an outage at a power line that's far away, it could maybe take out ten or, ten or a couple of households. So, I guess for us to, our strategy is to focus on the, those substations. But we're not only by the substations, but our surveys go, we're focusing also on those power lines. So, I kind of, it's just, and I know, like, the snake movement of doing catch and release. But again, I guess the information we want to take from that is to then, where should we focus? Or where can we help GPA to tell, to maybe help inform them that maybe the folk, where the focus should be for snake control? So, this is kind of the step to gather the information for how the snakes are acting within the urban areas. Because I would say, like, at this point, I think a lot of the brown tree snake research has been in just straight-up jungle areas. But now that we have, we're in urban areas, we also have homes and other places of prey, right? Like rodents or more birds that are non-native. So, it's a different type of ecosystem. I'll call it ecosystem, right, in the urban areas that we are not familiar with. And so, all to say is, like, we're, the snake movement information we're gonna gather by this mercury capture will help inform where GPA could potentially focus, yeah, snake control.
Man, can I make a suggestion that we amend the contract and make it read something like, for every ten that we find, we tag one and kill the nine? Because I think the movement's gonna be relatively the same. But you're really doing the entire island a favor. I mean, you guys are literally having nighttime meet and greet with the snakes. We're trying to stop them at our level, too. But fortunately, we don't have the kind of, not necessarily just time, but even the really bright headlights or whatever. So, I mean, if we can incorporate, maybe we'll pay part of this project for you guys to kill nine for every one that you tag, right? So, well, you know, thank you for the effort. I understand that there is an end goal. But more importantly, man, please do us a favor and kill nine and tag one. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, morning, everyone. I'm John Beneventi. I'm the utility administrative aide. Here, if I could just, I just want to note that we do work with USDA, as Ms. Joyce said. And what they do at the substations is they, the snakes that they trap from the snake traps, mice traps, and that they catch from spotlight captures, those they do kill, is just for this project where they're trying this catch and release method, so.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anyone online? Or we have one more, Dedodo? We're up against our 15 minutes already.
Buenos, thank you for the presentation. I just got a quick question regarding the capture. We have several residents that do call into our office, and they capture the snakes, and we usually refer them to agriculture. So, is there's any type of incentive as far as residents catching a certain amount of snakes that we can refer them to you? And, yeah, and another note, too, is as, our colleague from the village of Momontotumaiti had mentioned, preventive maintenance over the power lines, I think, is one key that could really prevent a lot of these. And one more, I noticed that Dedodo Substation at TND is not included as far as this map is concerned because we have several residents that, around that property as well as the GICC property that's there. I stay behind the GICC, and several times I have to break out the 20-inch blade and do what I need to do as far as the snakes are coming into my properties concerned. So, is there a plan of putting, as far as Dedodo Substation, where TND is at, into your maps?
As for the maps, so we just selected those eight study sites. But I, but I think GPA can speak to the control they might do around that area.
So, I know that the reason why there's no snake traps or that we have from USDA over there at the TND substation is because it's an indoor substation. So, all the reports that I've come across, I haven't seen one at Dedodo Substation.
It's okay. I think the boys up there just take the 20-inch blade and do what they need to do.
But, mayor, by all means, please contact us if they do. But of course, we always try and discourage our, our community to go near power lines, especially if they're live. And even if they're on the ground, we don't know if they're lives. We tell the kids every time we go out, right? Call an adult, let, you know, call GPA, call 911. But we really discourage our customers to come by any lines, you know. Sometimes, they don't even know it's a cable line, but they call us and we still respond. So, other than that, if they do, please call us. We're willing to help. It's just, we encourage our customers to not come by or be near any of our downlines or any of our power lines that are active, just for safety reasons, of course.
All right. If they're done, thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. And up next, we have the executive director of the Community Defense Liaison Office, Office of the Governor.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, mayor. And all the mayors, I guess, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to provide some background on our office, the Office of the Governor's Community Defense Liaison Office. And the office has been in existence for about 15 years since the first buildup planning initiative for the Marine Corps Base Camp Blas. And so, I'm not sure, I'm probably like the seventh director, but I've been director for about six and a half years. So, I guess I have the privilege of watching the Marine Corps Base complete and then watching now the Pacific Deterrence Initiative with the Guam Missile Defense System take shape and witness very significant budget for the Department of Defense and their priorities on Guam. But before I begin, I just want to introduce my team. I have former Senator George Bomba in the back, who is our senior policy analyst. And then, I have Mr. Jose Napatie, who is our senior planner. I do also have on staff a senior engineer, Mr. Al Santos, who worked for 30 years at Gura. And then, we just brought on Mr. John Birch, who has served in many, I guess, GovGuam positions and now serves as our chief planner in the CDLO. And so, I'll just go right to the next slide just to give you an introduction of what we do. So, we receive a lot of grant funding under the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation to mitigate the buildup on Guam. And so, some of the grants that we have received is mitigating construction projects, installation resilience for the community. We've done whole-of-government programs. And that whole-of-government is looking at the, involving the federal government in addition to the Department of Defense. Because, as you know, the federal government provides numerous grants to the government of Guam to address some of the buildup, like environmental protection, you know, GIPA, Gura. So, that's, that's that one. And then, we have mission realignment. So, whenever there's, we have not had that grant. That's more sort of aligned to, could be a BRAC action. But as you know, we are not, we are not facing any kind of closure for like, who knows how long that will be. But we're experiencing growth. The Defense Community Infrastructure Program, the first award was to the Chalapago Mayor's Office for the emergency and recreational facility. And then, we have GMH that had, was awarded last year to improve the HVAC system at the hospital. This year, we have several applicants. It's competitive. And we have several applicants that have submitted, the Port Authority, the airport. And these are for larger infrastructure projects. And then, the Defense Manufacturing Community Support, we have just started, the governor has launched the additive manufacturing initiative. And so, we hope to grow that through the Defense Manufacturing Community Support Project. In addition to that, and if it's okay, Joy, can I talk about our grant? With, yeah, okay. So, we, we are pleased, it has not yet been approved, but all indications are it will be approved. And that is a Village Needs Assessment Grant. And a portion of that grant will go to the Mayor's Council of Guam to help identify. So, so in discussing the mitigation that the island needs to be looking at with growth, we realize that, you know, you know, a lot is happening, sort of, I want to call it a, you know, in Agania, with the governor's office, with the agencies, with the DoD. But we realize that the boots on the ground, the people, our people, there's 19 villages. And what are, are they prepared for a natural disaster? God forbid, for any kind of foreign malign actors, right, to... Um, God forbid, for any kind of, uh, foreign malign actors, right, to, um, to do whatever they're, they, they say they're going to do to Guam, right? Are the mayors, are our villages ready? And so that grant is to help, um, the Mayor's Council and the villages, uh, to do a vulnerability assessment of your emergency response capabilities, um, and any vulnerability that you believe exists in the village, um, and we'll be looking at communication protocols, um, even, you know, um, wireless cyber capability within the villages. Some of you provide your residents with internet. Um, and I will say, it is the largest grant that our office has received in the 15 years of its existence. So it's an indication that the villages are very important, the people of Guam are, are villages, and so, uh, we're pleased that that is now at least, I would say, 99.9% through the approval process, um, and we are looking at an award, um, September 1st. Um, so we've been working hard on that grant and, uh, we're really happy that, that, that will be approved. Um, and so, and that's kind of why I'm here, to, to kind of help understand, uh, what our office does and, and how we can support, uh, our community and, and our mayors, um, you know, as, as you, you know, face some of the, the biggest challenges, uh, that we've seen in a long time. Uh, next slide, please. And so right now, grants that have been awarded, uh, from the, at least since I've been in office, um, the hold of government, compatible land use, um, we did fiscal impact as a result of military expenditures on the island, what that looks like, how we can plan. Um, we've provided, uh, grants to, for port modernization for the last 15 years, and I am very sorry to the port GM, but we took the money this year and gave it to the Mayor's Council. So, uh, that, that was a hard pill to swallow, but, you know, we, we, we've been supporting the port for about 15 years and, and certainly we'll, we'll be helping them address other issues, uh, with other means, so. Uh, and then we did the medical action plan, and, you know, you probably heard about that all over the news, uh, and that action plan was really a vulnerability assessment. What is the current condition of the Guam Memorial Hospital and do we need a new hospital? Um, and so that assessment was done and it helped, uh, inform decisions about, um, a new hospital and its location, uh, and it took into consideration the military growth, personnel, the veterans, um, and our COFA neighbors who come to Guam for medical, uh, support. Um, and then we have, uh, Grants Management, where we've funded training for a lot of our Gov-Guam, um, employees, uh, on grants management. Um, and then we also did the Veterans State Plan, and that was an assessment of the veterans' um, facility in PD, their operations, the data, um, and that has now, that's complete and that helps inform, um, Congress and others, uh, on the veterans' needs and their vulnerabilities to service that population. So, uh, that was provided to the congressman, and so, you know, kudos to him that, that we are going to see a, a processing center, I think is, if that was, that was called. But, um, so moving on to construction, um, you're all familiar with the wastewater treatment plant that is just about completed, um, that was funded with DOD funding, um, and that was about $170 million, uh, the cultural repository at the University of Guam, uh, our office managed that construction, and then the now new biosafety laboratory, uh, that. So these construction projects are, as a result of negotiation, negotiations with the DOD to mitigate their growth. And so what they did is, based on what we said to them, they funded these projects outside the fence to mitigate, um, like COVID, you know, had we had the biosafety lab, you know, the first three months, we probably would have been able to test our own, uh, samples without sending it off island, but it's happening now, so, uh, it's a very, it is not a public lab, it's a very high-tech lab, um, so we're pleased that that was funded. Um, so, uh, to the next slide. Uh, so right now, again, we have the Marine Corps Base, uh, Camp Blas, ongoing construction. They are, um, we just received our update from the Joint Region, uh, Team today, uh, and, uh, they are at least three or four years out to completion. Um, the Missile Defense Agency, Defense of Guam, if you're not tracking, uh, DOD this year has accelerated that program with the 200 and, $200 million budget, uh, in the '26 budget cycle to accelerate that program. Um, so there's a lot happening behind the security of Guam or related to the security of Guam, um, on all of the, the major bases on, on the island, so a lot of money's involved. Um, and, but so is a lot of work and, and mitigation for the government of Guam. The Singapore Bed Down, I, I probably should have taken that off, that has been placed on hold, that's not going to happen as of this date, so, you know, we'll see what happens with that. And of course, um, the Pearl Harbor Detachment, Guam, that's happening down at, uh, Navy Base, they're building that out, there's workforce development initiatives tied to growing the detachment center, um, down at Upper Harbor. And next slide. And so I know this is small, but it's a, it's a really important document, it's important to us, because prior to a big project, they are required by environmental law to announce a major action. So right now, they, we have the environmental impact statement for the Missile Defense of Guam program, and what that, what that does is it allows the government of Guam and our team to respond to some of the plans they have. That could be anything from, you know, things like, well, you're, you're going to build it in this area, and that area's been designated, um, as a critical habitat for endangered species. Um, it can be as simple as that, or as broad as, um, you know, you're going to be, uh, you know, doing exercises out in the ocean, we're, we're concerned that you're blocking off the, the fishing time for our people, uh, we'd like to mitigate a schedule. Um, and so that is important work for us, we are currently working on two, and that gives, and so the office leads that work. We bring together DOD and Gov-Guam agencies to address their major actions and, and then mitigate them, um, as appropriate. And I know our agencies individually get responses or get feedback from their stakeholders or constituents, um, so that is probably the main thrust of what we do, because this then, um, helps to secure funds for mitigation, like the cultural repository, like the biosafety lab. And in this, for the Guam Defense System, uh, we have major, major mitigation projects, uh, that we are proposing, uh, for DOD to support. Uh, part of that is Guam Power, underground power, um, the Port Authority of Guam, uh, modernizing and, and making sure our cranes are, are, uh, brand new and functioning and, and going to be able to handle the military growth. Um, the Airport Authority, uh, the Department of Public Works, uh, they get the defense access roads money. Um, so we continue to advocate for, for the agencies who support the people of Guam. And so this is the, the thrust of our work in making sure that we can mitigate, and when the governor goes or the congressman goes to see the Pentagon, that they have in hand the most critical infrastructure projects that are vulnerable right now and that need funding. And these critical projects also support DOD operations. So if, if the port were to go down, if the cranes were to go down, you know, they're not going to get what they need to build the defense system, we're not going to get our food, we're not going to, so, so we spend a lot of time, uh, proving to the DOD that there is a strong nexus between their growth and our infrastructure, and we advocate on behalf of the people of Guam to, to fund these important projects. So, um, that's the thrust of, of CDLO's work, uh, today. So what you're seeing here are the planned projects, and you'll see the level of NEPA actions required, um, and we keep track of this. And so we got this from them, and so we're able to keep track and, and plan accordingly to address some of the issues that we're facing on Guam. Um, and next slide. And so this, this will be updated, uh, this was the last one we got, and it's just a notional construction workload, um, uh, slide that kind of tells you what they're doing. So Dipri, in the green, that's the Marine Corps, uh, uh, Base Camp Blas construction. Um, and then you see we got a lot of malware money, they got a lot of malware money for recovery, um, and then the, the, the light blue is the Guam Defense System, which will peak, um, and I'm sorry you can't see the, the years on the bottom. Um, and then of course, you know, so everything that they're doing right now, they're already, we are already seeing that they're working at Polaris Point, they're working on communications, um, of course, the squadron in, in light purple, uh, Singapore, it's kind of, um, um, being held u- until all the other, uh, project, priority projects are done, and then, uh, at some point later on, um, they will start looking at their own schools and DOD schools. And we've had discussions about how we can partner i- in the schools, we're closing some of ours, um, there's been discussion about whether or not they would be willing to partner, uh, use our schools and reintegrate, uh, the students, um, but that is an ongoing, uh, discussion. So, um, so that's what the workload, we got an update today, and, um, yeah, we almost fell off our chair, it's about $5 billion in the next three years, four years, and, um, and then some. So it is a lot of work and it, it's certainly a lot of, um, opportunity, but when you see exponential growth, there's a lot of, a lot of impact to the level of service that we can provide for this growth, um, and our infrastructure capability. So we are going to look at that chart that we were given, um, I can send it to the Mayor's Council, it is public, um, and you can take a look at it and see just what's happening throughout the island with the Anderson Air Force Base, Navy Base Guam, the new Army Command, the Marine Corps Base. Um, we'll give you a picture of just how large, uh, and how important the security of Guam is to the DOD today. So, um, so that's that, and I think it's the last slide, or one more slide. So the, the, where I just came from is a Civil-Military Coordinating, Coordinating Council, that's an executive level, uh, partnership between the admirals, the governor, the, the admiral's teams, the Gov-Guam, the, the counter teams in Gov-Guam, where we talk about the issues, um, housing, labor, environment, um, cultural and historic preservation, public works and infrastructure and utilities. And so we meet every, about 60 days, um, to, to look at our, to share updates, to share some of the challenges, um, that the, both sides are facing, and how do we work together to find solutions? And that's, that's also part of, a big part of, um, CDLO's work. Um, our office, uh, leads that CMCC on behalf of the governor, um, and so, you know, that's, that's another thing that keeps us busy, but it all connects to the one main thing, and, and that is prioritizing the level of service, uh, to the people. So, um, next. And again, I, I just touched on this, but we will be receiving that grant award on September 1st, um, and we're looking forward to working more closely with our mayors, and uh, we will though, uh, we will be required to bring on subject matter experts, uh, um, and we'll go through that process, the, and we'll work with Joy Jean on how that works out, but definitely making sure we have the right experts helping the mayors and the villages, whether it's engineers, environmental, uh, groups, biol, you know, biologists, um, econ, you know, economists, uh, that will all be available, uh, as we do this, uh, vulnerabilities and emergency response assessment. Um, so that's, that's that one, and I believe that's our last slide, and you can call us anytime. Um, there is, how many of us? Seven in our office? So I, I like to say there's seven, seven of us handling, uh, about five to $7 billion of military work, trying to represent and just do the right thing for, you know, at the end of the day, for the, for the people of Guam. And again, I appreciate this opportunity, and, and if there's any questions or gripes or...
Any questions, comments?
Comments? About four, it's the largest we have ever received in 15 years, it's about 4 million. Um, and so we'll, the, the Mayor's Council will lead some of those tasks, and then we will bring the expertise in to, to work with the mayors and the Mayor's Council. Yeah, yeah, so, so it's, uh, yeah, so that is that.
All right. Got a question, comment? Mayor Wigan Heights?
Uh, thank you, Vera. Um, thank you for all the work you've done over the years, and, um, I can say I was a, I witnessed those years with you and your team and how you guys have grown over these years, to also, um, you know, also deal with this, uh, different, different leadership now that you guys are, you know, you guys have to work with every, perhaps three years, I'm not sure what's been happening, and of course, the new administration in the White House. But I just have a question, you know, Guam High, perhaps, you know, perhaps, um, the Vice President can chime in if any, Guam High's reached out to my office, um, several times, and I wanted to see how I can, um, see how we can do a sit-down, but it shouldn't just be me. Do you want to know about their Guam High, if, you know, in case of emergency, any potential, um, et cetera? Are they able to use our gymnasium in Aganites? So it's concerning, because of course, our priority is the residents of Aganites, my priority is if in a case, God forbid, anything that should happen. So they reached out to me, so I'm curious, because they're on the base, and I'm just curious if you're, something that you, are you tracking, or have you...
Well, um, I can say that one of the other grants that we submitted, um, is a vulnerability, uh, emergency response, sort of island-wide, and, and so it involves Guam Homeland Security and the Department of Defense, and it is going to address that very thing. What if, what if something happened, whether it's a natural disaster or, you know, again, God forbid, right, malign actors, North Korea, right? What if that happens? What will we do? And that's been a very important discussion between the Indo-Pacific Command, the Governor's Office, Joint Region Task, you know, Marianas, um, and so we are going to look at, you know, there needs to be a joint plan to address what, what do the people do? Because the reality is, inasmuch as, uh, that's in the base, uh, some of those families live outside the base, and they're not going to run to the base to try to hide, it's too far, you know, like if, if the siren went off. And so this has to be a concerted effort when we address homeland defense, uh, for Guam, and that is in the, in the, um, in discussion, and part of that grant includes participation from the leaders of Guam, right? So the village mayors to provide, uh, input to what that homeland defense strategy or plan, uh, needs to look like, should something happen, right? So, so to that point, um, you know, I mean, and, and there's a lot of good things happening anyway, people are reaching out to different agencies and mayors, uh, but we know we need a, we need a one Guam plan, um, because there's a reality here, right, that if anything should happen, the military's going to be busy, uh, on the base, they're going to shut it down, and they're going to be defending the, the very things that defend us, right? The missile systems, the, and then we're outside, and what do we do? Um, and that is important to, to, to us, and that has been made a priority, and again, you know, uh, kudos to my colleagues in the government of Guam, but we've had to reprioritize the money that we have to now look at our community and, and our village, our villages, so that's...
Thank you for the answer, and then you know...
So I will keep you posted.
Yes, thanks, thanks, Vera, and that's, and that's exactly, it's just a coincidence that you talked about the money that was, you're able to help the villages, more so that how perhaps we can raise that 4 million higher, so we can assist all the villages. And I think the mayors can, um, echo what I'm saying about, for example, the Guam High, that's one thing, they're reaching out already, so they're aware. So island-wide, if, if this funding can get even, you can bring more monies to, for the community, 4 million will just, we can, I think will be higher.
Oh, yeah, this really is just, uh, it's a vulnerability assessment to look at several different layers of, um, emergency response, right? of, um, emergency response, right? Um, and, but that, that vulnerability assessment will help inform us and prioritize what level of, um, infrastructure support, telecommunications support. And you know, the biggest thing for us was after Mawar, the, the phones, cellphones shut down, right? I mean, half of us had to drive, you know, I live, you know, I, I live in pneumatic. I don't know, where's my mayor?
One way.
Oh, hi mayor. Anyway, but you know, my, the phone died. And usually the governor's cabinet, you know, when, after an emergency, everybody, but I was calling, I guess they don't need, but you know, but I, I had to drive to Adalip. I'm here, do I need to help? And that, that happened for, I don't know, about a month for some people. And that's a big thing. And you've heard, you've heard this, that the governor's cellphone went down. The governor's commi-, the admiral had to hand deliver a mobile radio just to communicate, um, between the DOD because they, they, they go into civilian mode for, uh, you know, for, um, with Gov Guam when they address, um, you know, natural disasters, right? So that's how vulnerable our community was, right? At that time. And that was, that's a very concerning thing. So this grant will help look at those things. You know, what do you need to improve in terms of telecommunications? Are the carriers, you know, providing that level of, and then what do we do? And then how much does it cost? And we have, then we have a package from that, from every village mayor that helps us defend the reason, you know, defend the kind of money that we need to help build the infrastructure up. And there are, um, I know for some of you, there's some things already happening, hardening of the gyms, hardening of the mayor's offices, right? Those, those are really important, um, um, areas to, to be looking at. And I know there's already hazardous mitigation folks looking at that. Um, you know, the governor's office and the lieutenant governor, the, there's so much work. You see DPW with all the money, um, you know, to help Guam, but there's still many challenges ahead for us and we recognize that. And, um, we will help wherever and support and advocate, especially in this time for mayors. You know, that's important. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you Vera. That's, that's really good. I believe there's nineteen districts, nineteen million, everyone gets a million and it's hardening the village. It's hardening the village is what we want to do after the, after, excuse me, after the war. Actually, really it is Mawar. But after Mawar, everyone talked about hardening the power system, right? So this is exactly where that money could go to make this happen for the, the mayors. And like you said, we're the first responders and this will be really incredible if you could get nineteen million and wow, that's gonna be really good. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think, uh, Joy, maybe we can schedule, once we get the award, schedule a grant brief and how we're gonna execute, right? So, yeah. Um, and that's it. That's all we have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the agenda, we have the approval of the June minutes. You received the minutes in your email. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes? It's been moved by the mayor of Talafovo. Can we get a second? It's been seconded by Asan Mayor. Discussion. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Next is the approval of Trezor's report. Can we get a motion to approve the Trezor's report? It's been moved by the Vice Mayor of Baragada. Can we get a second? Seconded by the Mayor of Dedodo. Discussion?
Mayor Jigo?
Oh, Jigo? Oh, I heard it over here. Okay, Mayor Jigo seconded. Any discussion? If there are no discussions, all in, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Executive Director's report.
Thank you. Um, sorry. Several key items I'd like to report on. So firstly, the bid for the abandoned vehicles. I know we've all been waiting for it. We're patiently waiting for it. I want to thank you for your patience, but we are going through the procurement process. So the good news is, we are now in phase three. There's four phases. So the bid was, um, submitted yesterday. We opened it yesterday and now we are currently evaluating it. I'm hoping I can get some recommendations by the end of the week. Um, once I do get the recommendations by the end of the week, we will move to phase four, which would be, uh, providing the notice of intent to award to whoever the bidder may be. So again, that's just, I think that's good news for the council. Secondly, the disposal of white goods and electronics, uh, is currently in phase three. Phase three is the evaluation of the bidding process and that's the most I can give to the council at the moment. Lastly, I think this is important for you guys to know. The funding update as it relates to the recycling revolving fund, um, we have submitted a work request to EPA. And that's because it's the prior years, uh, prior year obligation and we are awaiting approval for that. We would like to use it. Um, I was wanting to run it simultaneously with the bid, but we have not gotten the approval just yet. That is the prior year obligation. So the funding for FY 2025 has been obligated. As you can tell, the bids are actually obligating the funds. Um, and that's the bids we've published. As for the FY 2026, we haven't had any discussion on that yet. So I'm not able to update the, the council on that information just yet. But, um, I am working closely with EPA. We're keeping them informed of the process. So I'll continue to update the council as we progress. And that's really about it.
Thank you. Any questions for the Director? The Vice Mayor of Tumuning is recognized.
I know that you mentioned, uh, the white goods and the, uh, abandoned vehicles. About the metals. Do we have anything on standby for the metals?
So, uh, all of that is inclusive of the recycling revolving fund in itself. So we just kind of broke it down. The abandoned vehicles is left alone. It's, it's a loan. It's a, it's a bid alone. And then the other services that covers that funding source has been put out on a bid. So we separated them.
So we're not gonna hear anything about the, the metals yet?
Uh, Vice, we're actually going through the procurement process and it's, so we can update you as, uh, it's difficult to speak on it if it's, if we're going through procurement at the moment.
All right. Uh, Mayor of Dedodo is recognized.
Vice, uh, regarding the metals, I'm just here aware a little bit that between the recycling centers over at Pyramid and Global, they take it for free up there. If it's loose metal, you can bring it, you can bring it straight up there with no charge. They won't scale you because you're on a government official with the trailer, but you can bring it in there for a free charge. Cause that's what our guys do. When we have residents that have bare metal, we just have them, we have them bring it out to the front easement and we meet them halfway where my guys will come up and pick it up and they bring it straight to Global at no charge. So in your case, it's as far as Tumuning, I believe SD Recycling does take the loose metal over there. And, um, I think there's another recycling center within the Harmon Industrial that does take it. So you just gotta reach out to them on their hours of business. I believe Global, they're closed from twelve to one. And then their last call's at four thirty. So anything bare metal, you can bring it straight up there.
All right. Any other questions to the Executive Director?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on, um, committee reports, boards and commissions. Um, I know that, uh, the Mayor of Dedodo has expressed his desire to no longer represent GDOE. I understand it's a very hard, uh, it is a hard task attending things outside of your duties. So the, that position is open and we would like to see if anyone here would like to volunteer to serve on the GDOE board. Don't all come at me at once now. Really?
Uh, Mayor, if I may?
Yes. Mayor Jonia is recognized.
I would like to sit on the GDOE board, um, as a, as the, um, as the MCU's representative. However, I sit on two other, um, other, uh, boards. Uh, so I would like to, if, if possible, taking on that task. Um, I would, I would have to relinquish my, my representation on the other two boards as well.
You don't have to. You can actually hold three or four. Cause as long as you're, you can only hold one that's confirmed by the legislature, but everything else, if it's just by appointment, you could sit on three or four. But you, you're...
I would prefer, yes.
What other two boards are you on?
I sit on the, um, Serve Guam Commission and the Committee on Decolonization.
All right. So we're gonna do a little shuffle here. So if you're okay with GDOE, we have the decolonization. Do you want to do that one, Vice? Yeah. For decolonization? Awesome. Okay. So GDOE. Well, any objections to Mayor Terlahe serving the GDOE board? Good luck and condolences. We'll provide escort. And then for the Committee on Decolonize, Commission on Decolonization, the Vice Mayor of Jigo, thank you so much, Pedro Blas for a pre-, any objections to Pedro doing decal? All right. So next is the Serve Guam Commission. Amerkor.
I just...
Okay. You want to say something? Go ahead.
If I get some time. I just want to provide a little comment as far as the, uh, former representative from the MCUG, um, to the Department of Education. I, you know, I just want to say, you know, it's a, it was a rough ride. Um, I want to acknowledge the, my predecessor for, um, nominating me to represent the council at that level for, to the Department of Education. And likewise with the Mr. President, um, to not, you know, nominate me to as well as to be the representative. But me, I had to look at it a little further. Um, you know, those are some big shoes to fill, right? As far as Department of Education to, uh, is concerned and as far as my predecessor's concerned. And she done a great job representing the council to the Board of Education. But me as a first time mayor, and likewise with my first time vice mayor, you know, um, in the village of Dedodo, we're dealing with nine public schools and we do help out those nine public schools in every little possible way we can. But as far as, uh, me being the first term mayor in the village, in the biggest village, as far as population is concerned, I had to take a step back and breathe and relax. There's a lot of, uh, issues that we're facing in the village of Dedodo and we are all elected to these positions to serve our village first before anything else and foremost. So, you know, I just want to say thank you to the President, to the council, to my predecessor for nominating me to be the representative. But, phew, maybe in the next couple of years, I'll think about that as far as, uh, being a representative to that certain agency. And, um, you know, just off the record, uh, I, I just couldn't believe exactly the agency with the most money, the most college degrees, but yet we couldn't, yet they couldn't figure out the basic math, addition, subtraction, multiplication and division and, um, so on. So I was just, you know, I know that comment probably is gonna, you know, I'll get some DMs pretty quick, pretty soon from my, uh, family within the department or whatnot, but it's just the honest truth. All those years, I mean, I, I, you know, Namacy Superintendent, Salana, they just came on board and they're chopping him down like the axe. It's just not right. You know what I mean? You should look at the people that were in the department, especially in accounting division, that have been there that for over ten, twenty years. How did that come about? But yeah, that's just my comment on that regarding the agency with the most money, the most degrees, but yet can simple, can figure out the basic math. So, um, Mayor BJ, Sisus Masia, I'm taking that helm over there at Department of Education, but like, uh, the Vice President had said, condolences to you and, um, you know...
That's just a joke. Mayor...
You can do it. You can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Diag. On behalf of the Mayor's Council, Sisus Masie for your service to that committee as well. So thank you. So we have one vacancy in the Serve Guam Commission. Um, anyone want to do this? Come on. They only meet once a year. I'm kidding. I don't know how often they meet. Ann, you want to do this? Come on, Ann. You can do this. You got work to do. Who's not here will appoint them. I'm kidding. We'll leave this vacant for now, but for those that just got refilled, if the Mayor's Council office can go ahead and send those letters to inform the respective agencies of the change, uh, the new representation, we appreciate it. Thank you so much. Any other committee reports on boards and commissions? Anything to report? If you're meeting, not meeting, again, please let the Director know. Any standing committee reports? If there are none, I do have something for new business. It's just here, it's non-controversial. Uh, as we know, Colonel Ernest Goveya will be, uh, having a change of command on July seventeenth. And, uh, I think it would be nice, on behalf of the Mayor's Council, we present a certificate of appreciation. So if we can get a motion to approve one and it's...
I second that motion.
So it's been moved by the Vice Mayor of Baragada and seconded by the Mayor of Dedodo on a certificate of appreciation for Colonel Goveya. Uh, I gave, I did provide you his biography on the chat and we'll go to him, provide that with, to Ms. Joy Jean. And then, uh, they want to know, just so they can actually include it into the program on the change of command ceremony. So if we'll be invited to present the certificate as well, if you can represent us. I know it's on the seventeenth, so just remember you have memorials on some days. So just double check your schedules. So, okay. So all in favor of the certificate appreciation for Colonel Goveya, please say aye. Any objections? No objections?
Aye.
Thank you. It passes. Thank you, Sisus Masie. Uh, I'll find out from Uriah. Uh, he's, he's tuned in somewhere there. So thank you. And I'll send a message out. I'm sure they'll send it. I'll, I'll make sure he sends the invitation out. All right. Next, moving on to unfinished business, the eighty-first Guam Liberation festivities. I know memorials have already been underway. Uh, do we need to cover anything on the other festivities? I was hoping Mayor Kevin would be here. If not, uh, Joy Jean, can you give an update and, and on anything for the three day thing we were talking about or not? Go, no-go?
We're, yeah, we're, we're still trying. We've been meeting. Um, we, we're trying to finalize some, some information and I think we'll have, we'll have more information on Friday. So that's our, kind of our target date. And I don't want to, it's too preliminary at the moment.
Understood. Announcement forthcoming. Any other comments, questions, concerns on liberation? I know twelve of you applied for the parade. Good job. I know of the twelve of you, only a handful of you submitted your write-ups. So I, it's my duty to please impress upon you to turn in your write-ups. Uh, I think it was due when you turned it in. So...
Your write-ups are due?
Yes, your write-ups are due. So Jonia, yours is done. Moleso, you need to turn in. Talafovo, turn in. Agania Heights, turn in, please. Jigo, please turn in. Sanarita, please turn in. Mangilau, please turn it in. And Baragada, please turn it in. Those that have submitted already are Jonia, Inalahan, Dedodo, Hoggit and Chalampago. So thank you to the twelve of you. Good luck on your entries. I know it's gonna be an interesting, uh, competition. So...
You had mentioned that we started at the right time. We have to turn the right number of payments.
Uh, it's check marked here, but yeah, sure. Then if, go ahead and just double check.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do it a second time. Okay. So thank you for all those that entered. I know that from yesterday, I believe they said there was forty plus entries in total. I know the number's growing. So, uh, good luck to all of you. May the best, uh, village win on this. Yeah. Non, oh, you joined but not competitive. But those that did join for compet-, I saw a sneak peek of Baragada's. Wow. I hope you can clear the power line with that though.
It started last year.
They started last year? Huh?
They need, I think, the danger to take.
I don't know. Otherwise, I think the chief's gonna get hung. They have a chief writing on Earth. Dog is bigger than the float. All right. Uh, next is the Mayor's Council FY 2026 budget. Thank you to my colleagues who did show up for the hearing. Sisus Masie for lending your testimony and really your, just you have your firsthand experience for some of the new ones. And for the, once you've been here for a while, it was really powerful. And thank you for the employees who showed up. I think it's hard to see where they're gonna go on this. I hope, I'm hoping they give us what we need. But, uh, I'll let the Executive Director give, uh, more of an update on the 2026 budget.
Well, I mean, basically we, we attended the budget hearing and I have to wait to see what is, what, you know, comes out of, of that. But I want to remind, um, the mayors that, you know, you do have, there's those that have funding that you need to kind of start pushing in your procurement, right? Because we're, we're coming up to the end of the fiscal year. And what that means for all of us is we don't know if the legislature's gonna allow prior year obligations to be carried over. That's number one. Number two, we all have plans for the money. You gotta ensure that, that comes in so we can start procuring for you guys. So as long as it's obligated, which is we've identified what we're, we're gonna use the money for, um, we should be good with that. Even though it's, it, let's say September thirtieth comes around and we obligated the money, um, as long as we obligate, uh, cert-, goods and supplies or equipments and supplies can come in thereafter. But we have to complete, uh, again, we're going up for more money, right? Let's just use, we want to do more, but we need more. So if we're gonna go out and say that, then please, mayors, we must live up to that. So again, you all know your budget, you know your balances, you must be, be able to expend that, okay? Cause we, we want to be able to go back to the legislature. Because we, we want to be able to go back to the legislature and say, yes, indeed, senators, this is what we've done.
Thank you. And many of you are receipt of the letter from BBMR. You saw that in the email explaining the budget, how the budget is processed, the mayor's council does not submit its budget to BBMR. And so during that hearing where they're saying, oh, this was the number, it's actually not done. It's just a placeholder, but it's always done directly. OPA, UOG, GCC, Judiciary, all send their, mayor's council sends their budgets directly to the mayor's council, so there was, we were, I, I didn't know that was the process, but now we know, it's on the, the response from Lester. Also on that response of the BBMR, you also noticed what the director talked about, is really spending within your levels. What we have right now left in our, our budgets, please talk to your accounting techs downstairs or ask for whatever you have there because there's still some reserves as far back as 2020. And so some villages have some money, and so it's really hard to keep going before people and all of us fighting for you, saying we need more, not knowing you're, you're sitting on a pretty decent piggy bank of some sort. So whatever project you have in mind, please double-check it and triple-check it, see if it's in the correct categories, see its correct spending categories, and then let's move forward from there, so we can kind of get down to that. Otherwise, we can just say, give it, take, take it all and just pay down the debt with it, but I don't want to do that either. So let's spend what we have, let's spend everything that we have in this year, the previous year, the previous year, for the last five years that are just sitting in our accounts. And please make sure we double-check on all the bills and invoices you have and what you may suspect from your predecessors. For those of you, some of you that did change out, that you might discover, so I know that's what's also giving us that delay on some of it because we have, we are still paying vendors. So that number that's on that BBMR letter is not accurate because we still have outstanding vendor payments as well that are just ready to get done, so that's all being processed. And with that being said, Madam Director, I wanted to ask, how are we on the outstanding payments?
Yeah, so we're, we are gathering the information, I was hoping to have it by last week Friday, but our accounting team is still working on that. Please keep in mind, our, our staff here is also assisting. We've assisted on the Queen's coronation, we're assisting on the carnival, we're assisting on the, you know, certain side projects that we have with the mayor's offices, so it's, it's kind of pushing our day-to-day operation, it's, it's affecting us a bit. But I did ask the, the accounting team to come up with the, that outstanding payment or the, their balance at the very least last week, Friday. They committed to getting me something by this week. As always, I will share it with your offices, but to add on to what you had mentioned, Vice President, is if you guys are not aware of your balances, please come and see us so that we can, we can let you know what you have outstanding and that you can either move your monies to where you feel you need to work on your projects or however you want to procure, we'd be happy to assist you. Again, we need, we, we, I am not here asking, as the mayor said, I am now begging. Please, let's get that done, because again, we went before the legislature and I don't want to make us feel like we're, we're asking for something and yet we can't spend. We are here to make sure we help you guys spend that.
And if you don't want your money, I'll gladly take it from you. I could use it for other things, hey, I'm serious. I can help you. Thank you. With that being said, we're going to move on to item, or number, item C, MCG bylaws. I know there was, in the last meeting, we did present you the bylaws, you all had it. I am going to ask to table this because there was a section there on procurement we're still trying to work on, we're still getting some clarification for. So because it's on the agenda officially, can I get a motion to delay this discussion until the next one? It's been moved by MTM, can I get a second? Second by Dedado, discussion on this. So once we get the clarifications and the executive director gets more information on the procurement section of the bylaws, we'll go ahead and present that to the body as a whole, so you have time to review it versus us voting for something that it has to change and we keep doing amendments, okay? So on that motion, all in favor, say aye. Any objections, none? Thank you. The unfinished business is suspended for that and delayed, okay? Any announcements? The mayor of Inalahan is recognized.
Yeah, I want to make a comment, actually more like a motion, if you will, but I wanted to see, you know, in, when we were presenting at the budget, I just realized that, you know, I didn't, I never really knew the, the salary that was being made by the senators, which is about fifty-five thousand, twenty thousand dollars less than us, and maybe perhaps, I'm just thinking that internally, they're not going to want to give themselves a raise. And I'm here basically saying, you know, collectively as a body, as a council, maybe we can collectively put together like a resolution or such, recommending that they can make that consideration. And particularly because, you know, we do have an election coming up. More importantly, understanding that it's only fifty-five thousand, you're not going to get good, quality candidates wanting to forfeit whatever they're currently making to be able to run at that, at that level to serve at fifty-five, that's going to be very hard for anyone to make that decision to vacate a current position they're holding, making more than that. You know, so again, I would like to ask the body here to consider that, you know, we as a, the council present some kind of recommendation to the senate, to the speaker in this case, to have a consideration for themselves to look at giving themselves a raise of some sort. I know it's going to be hard for them to do it internally, but I think you have an external body like us who represents and speaks on behalf of the island. That's something that I would like, you know, for the body to consider, if, if, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we put together a write-up and encourage them to do so.
We can, I know we can't entertain a motion because that's, that would be specific for legislation, so we can't do that and would have to be on an agenda, give public notice to do that, to give their opinion, so unlike the certificate of appreciation where it's really almost non, it is non-controversial, we would have to put this one on something because it actually would affect legislation on that. I just want to speak on that part, I know that their salaries were once tied to whatever, it was half of the judicial, the judicial salary. I'm not sure what changed in between that, which is why they went from fifty-five up to a certain amount because the judicial side got the raise and then they kind of brought it down on themselves. So I know that something changed in between that dynamic, but I don't know if that formula still exists there, that it's just their option not to exercise the formula or they're just saying they're going to sit like, I don't think they said it by law, I think they just went back and reverted and then some returned the money, so that's something to explore, we can do that, as you researched the resolution on that, we can kind of go from there and see that and then maybe put that on the next agenda for them.
Okay, you know, I'm bringing this up only because I know they're in a position of trying to be frugal, moving forward with every, everything and every agency, right? But at, but at the same token, in preparation for the new election, I'm saying, I think that it will become more receptive for potentially new candidates to want to run and be able to serve, but of course, definitely a lot higher salary. Again, something to think about, food for thought for my colleagues, I hope you guys put that in some level of consideration and, you know, in the next meeting, if possible, if we can make it part of the agenda, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Announcements, festivals, fairs? Nothing? All right, if there are, if there are none, can we get a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Talafovo, second. Second by Baragada. On that motion, all in favor, say aye.